Six, we'll call the meeting for first one for businesses. Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I approve the minutes on September 7th.
So what?
Motion in the second. Second, any further discussion? You got it or we're good or? We just added a clarification on item number 11 to clarify that it was a liquor, alcohol, liquor for those people who don't know. So, thank you. All right, motion second, any further discussion? Take your little favor, so everybody. That's number four, Cheryl, we'll start with you.
No. I've had a couple people ask about like safety things for, I don't know if it's gonna be us or if it's gonna be a state level, but kind of there's another like accident with one of the Amish carriages and looking at possibly like enforcing having like the reflective triangle or lights or something because it's now, and it's getting dangerous, especially when they're down in the intersection. Apparently like at dusk now it's getting dark earlier, it's been a concern for, a couple people mentioned that they can't see him, they kind of come out of nowhere, it's all black and just think people are getting anxious about it. So, I don't know if we do anything or if that's like a state, but like.
Anything else? Jim?
I didn't have anything, the only thing I will add is I, the boys this morning for the first time had the triangle again lit lantern.
Yep.
So I don't know if it's because of that, but this morning they had everything.
Yeah.
So I don't know if it's a new move.
Yeah, no, I think that's great, I think.
That's all. All right, so, all right, Tom?
All right. Navy Municipal Association Annual Conference is scheduled for Wednesday, Thursday, the 7th and 4th. Usually we close the Wednesday issue of the relevant stuff for office staff, it's Thursday, so we'll be closed on the 4th. We locked in propane prices since the last meeting at 195, that's through Fabian, and that will take care of our entire season's supply hopefully, or burn through residual through next June. Crack seal strike project at the airport been delayed, we have weather, then we have EVAC training and contract delays. So I don't have a start place on that, hoping that it just gets moving in a timely manner there. Efficiency main, we have that press conference here, one of the gaps in our first applications for heat pumps was the airport. The terminal downstairs of South Public Area, then also the administration area upstairs. If you haven't been in either of those on any day, it's open to the sun and embalts and bakes. So I'm looking to apply for that, we have contractor up to take a look at it, the same folks that did this here, and we'll try to see that through. Jeff's gonna talk to us about their proposed transfer station on the airport road. We are, it's an online meeting on October 4th, that's not the right date, no it is the right date, we're closed on October the 6th, sorry. On October 4th at 2:00 PM, it's a Zoom meeting, but we're gonna host access here for folks that don't want to do Zoom at home or can't do Zoom at home. The grant application to Good Shepherd Food Bank to support the potential opening of a food pantry, that was up to $100,000, we were denied in whole on that. We didn't get any feedback as to why, my guess is that they want something broader in terms of concept as opposed to just a project. But I reached out for feedback there, haven't heard anything, so we'll try to find out once fine award announcements are made. Mid-May Chamber of Commerce held a press release event the other day down water along the river, introducing their economic impact study surrounding the removal of the dams. That's something that's obviously important to us here, the governor and potential, and both major gubernatorial candidates have said they don't want to remove the dams. Fact of the matter is, is that there's an agency in the current administration that won't come out and say we're not removing the dams or anything. So it still remains of interest, and obviously we have substantial in terms of the river in our community, but also the jobs that are supplied by the river and river industry. So I continue to keep an eye on that, tax collection, that was, taxes were due yesterday, collection rate on real estate is 10 points ahead, nine points ahead overall last year. So that's good news on the whole, personal property tax is just a slight downtick versus last year. 629 Skavigan Road, that's a repayment plan on an automatic foreclosure, they are in default again. They will have until October 19th to pay the $500 payment from last month and the $500 payment for this month. If they have to bring that current with contract to be terminated, we repay all payments as a part of it, so hopefully they'll get that product. Over into parks, the work at Ashley Wing Park has started, there's been some multiple open things up, easy access for the law work. As we were to develop partner area, that's moving along nicely, I've also made contact with the Chair of Biology at Colby College to see if we could get a student intern to work with us on the property and some preservation education components there. So he didn't think it was gonna be the natural fit for his department, I think it's gonna be more environmental studies, but I wanted to put it out there. It's, you know, I gave him what our real goals are in terms of developing the plan, executing on it, all of that. Even if it required a stipend for that intern, I think it would be a wise use of our funds, we're gonna be able to capitalize on that, so. The TIF committee wants to see some improvements made to the town square downtown. Creating a difference, separation between the square itself and then the access to the rail trail, where theoretically motorized vehicles would be coming on and off largely, and then not having them come all the way up in towards the Christmas tree or on the sidewalk or whatnot. So they've asked for prices on fencing, as well as what it would cost to put boulders in that end of it and then make bring it up a little bit to improve the grade there, create that separation, so we've got prices coming in on both of those. The one with the proposed contractor with regards to the boulders, I asked them to give me an add-on price for spotted boulders up the entire length of that driveway, also removing the foundation curbside and putting a couple large boulders up the top to create some sense of hard containment and add a little bit more character to the space, because right now it's just mess. So we'll see about that next Tuesday at the TIF meeting. They're also going to hear a facade improvement application for a building that we've already supported in Dr. Baker's office, where main laboratories, which would be the first in the state PFAS testing would operate out of, so that's a pretty good opportunity. It's a niche right now, obviously essentially located, a younger couple from down south is doing it, they have connections to the area. So, you know, something that's gonna keep that space commercial and they want to do a lot of exterior work, so it'd be good to see that through hopefully. Hiring committee on fire chief applicants, that's been moving along pretty swiftly. Hopefully we'll hold another round of interviews in the next couple of weeks and have somebody to present to you before the end of October. A few things to work out there, but let's move in along nicely, thanks to Jim, he's been representing the board on that panel. And spend those so far. This, we have a speed trailer that we signed up for eight months ago, it's finally on our rotation to be in town, it's gonna be here for two and a half weeks, starting next week. If you have any suggested locations, please let me know, I've got a couple on my mind, but if you have things, just let me know, we'll get it there for three or four days. So we can spread it around town, the new generator, Public Works, that's funded through MEMA half, that will be installed on the 29th. Sotter already has a Round Robin schedule for this weekend, that should be another good event for businesses in town, as well as Snack Shack. Sewer, there is a, not just sewer, there's a water and sewer program that's been introduced by Main Housing. They would give qualified individuals payments on their arages for back water and sewer bills, and then also potentially apply a credit to a water bill. This is federal money that the state's giving to Main Housing, and now Main Housing is divvying it out. So I've enrolled in the program so that our rate payers could be eligible for it, we work with the water district, I think that's gonna happen. So they say I would be eligible, it's income privilege, so I think a single individual, it's about $30,000, but I think they would qualify them for the program, so. Anyway, we have packets here at the office, but primarily we're driving people to Main Housing. I also sent a mailer to every, almost every account that we've leaned the last cycle around for sewer lemons, make them aware of the program. So we're just gonna direct mail to them. And then the sewer commission will meet next Monday to review financials and also consider what is arguably an inevitable rate increase, we've been operating, we operated in a slight deficit last year, it's gonna look to be a little bit more this year, they're gonna have to be some adjustments.
They haven't increased rates for?
Since 2012 that we increased rates, but they've been doing periodic financial reviews, they knew it didn't look good coming out of last year. They want to see that change and they want to keep a close eye on it, they're a little bit more focused with interest on the board right now, so. Anyway, there's also an open seat on that board, if anybody's interested. Assessors meeting tomorrow to do most of the cleanup work for tax bills, that's first thing in the morning. The Chilwongke event, that's Bats of the World, is what it's called, at the Grange, sponsored by the library on Saturday. First response by our Q and A Thursday, and.
Shining.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, discussion action on September 23rd, general warrant number 18.
I move that we approve general warrant number 18 in the amount of $181,390.64.
Moving into the second, this question, Edward B.
So there are half a dozen names on here for tax over payments. So typically we have mortgage holder that pays this, so that's, yeah, that's 123 Madison Road, Ben Colley Bailey.
Yeah.
So their mortgage holder pays taxes and then they pay their taxes.
Yes, okay.
It's around the keeping out of their books, we're cleaning that up, and this, any individual names on this warrant are those?
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Oh, you were not.
Almost everybody.
All right, discussion action on September 21st.
I move that we approve airport warrant number nine in the amount of $8,742.42, 47 cents.
Motion second, any further discussion?
Okay, so we've paid for the ceiling out at the airport, but it's not happening, is that what you see here?
So what you see are professional services, which is our consulting firm where they do all the plans and make their, it's an engineering firm. So we only, we accrue all those bills on the consulting until the FAA reverses us. So we're responsible for 5% of the total bill, the state of Maine pays 5%, and FAA pays 90%. So these are bills going back probably a year on that project, and that's the total bill of state, FAA, sorry, is $29,000.
Okay, so it's more around like 3,000 that we're responsible for, and that's just the engineering, that's not the actual work itself?
Right.
Cheepers creepers of the airport, okay, all right.
Okay.
There we go.
Motion to the next town. Oh, good, special action on September 21st.
Where is the store?
Next town.
What number?
I don't have your book's numbers, but I'm on 10, 10 or 11, 12.
Number eight.
No.
Can't see it. Yeah. Where's the, no, there in front. Okay, I move that we approve the general sewer commitment for the amount of $25,574.06.
Motion second, any further discussion? We need to do a presentation from this management Friday, question for review on the transfer station. Please, oh my gosh.
Hey, that's just if you want me to give a cheers. So, part of our Phase 14 expansion was to provide a new presidential drop-off facility. This is a draft, it's somewhat final, but it's a draft, open for discussion. We're planning to use, this will be at the, if you hold this with St. Germain in your top right, Airport Road is at the top of your page. And you would be coming, as you come in straight with the darker gray shaded line, you'd be driving through the existing transfer facility as we have it today, which, this is my 30th year, I'm actually going to 31, and from my opinion, we are, we were past that back then. Yeah, 30 years ago, but anyway, we're going to, you're gonna come in off of Airport Road, turn left and come in, we're gonna drop the level down. Everything that's there now will disappear, we're gonna make this so that vehicles can stack inside the facility rather than out on the road, because that's problematic, so as you see, when, when, as you follow this gray travelway in, it turns off to the right coming in. Now in an area where the metal cans are and the TV, where Marcel would have, and Marcel's left us by the way, he's with the school district now. A big loss.
Yeah, huge.
Yeah, big loss, great guy. But anyway, where he collected TVs and the metal cans, he'll now veer off to the right there and go out into a little piece of high hardwood ground, and this will be the new facility. So we'll have a good, we'll still have a gate down by the road, but we'll get out, my plan is to have two gates, so we'll have a main gate out by Airport Road. We'll open that up, allow people to come in, stack off the road, and then as you come in, in like a tan color is the attendance building. And this is all set up like a horseshoe, somewhat, modified horseshoe, so our traffic will come in, stay to the right, and circle around and leave, as you, as you come into the right, we've got an MSW compactor, a single stream compactor, and then they're all labeled, but in, in, those are subject to change. My initial plan was to have two MSW compacters, and depending on the way this thing ends up with contractor bids, I'd like to go back to two. Just makes it flow a little easier rather than bottlenecking it one place. So they'll come in, discard, many more parking areas, there won't be trailers again, that's just, that's a challenge, it's crazy. It's much safer this way, in fact, we talked today, I, if I have my way, I won't even allow someone, you figure that's a long way for somebody to park out on the road and borrow a wheelbarrow and go all the way in, it's like 500, it's like 300 yards or so, so that, that hopefully goes away too. And, and so that won't happen, but this will come in, people will go in and then discard around, all the way around the top of that. And then you'll have additional containers for wood metal tires, and the other amber type building, it will be a building so that we'll have like a, a universal waste, e-waste building that we can have everything in undercover and accessible to like a van to come in and get loaded up on off days. And then out, we will have another area for composting bins, but we're gonna have a compost site, but it won't be here, it'll be elsewhere on the property. And we'll, we'll just maintain in like toders, like you see recycling bins here, and have multiple of that so that odor doesn't become a problem over time, we get those moved out on a daily basis or as needed, and then get them offsite and then we'll turn them, that approved food waste in with horse manure, give it away.
So is that the program that we brought in the buckets they presented to us, is that where they would be dropping off? Yeah.
Yeah. It would. And as, you know, all the, all the commercial like waste management trucks will be down on lower level. These containers will all be covered with, they'll be big steel I-beams with shed roofs over the top of them, so there'll be theoretically no rainwater getting into these. I don't know, we, we went all around the state looking at good facilities, New Hampshire, and we found that this, this actually is very similar to what they have in Lewiston, Auburn, and somewhat like our facility down in New Hampshire, and it just allows a good flow of traffic and safer. We're, we're, we're hiring a new person right now with Marcel leaving, Josh is just our time helper up there filling the gap. He's not a permanent person for that by any means, but we're looking for somebody that wants to work primarily there, that would be their function, not get dragged off into other things on the site, Tuesday through Saturday. Any comments, concerns? If you don't think of any right now and you have some, Richard, Richard will get them to me and we'll see what we can do to accommodate, but this is, this is light years ahead of where we are.
Yeah. It's fantastic.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be nice.
It's nice.
It'll be nice.
And it's gonna be way better than Park. Well, that is big, really, that is a big piece, and you have, you've allowed more than enough there to that.
I think.
A lot backs up.
I hope, I think, you know.
These states, so two lanes being into.
Yeah, that's two lanes coming in.
Yeah.
So there'll be, you know, you can stack quite a few vehicles.
10 or 15 off the road, it's more than, or you know.
Yeah, I think, I think this will easily take.
Is this ever gonna allow, because you guys have been doing the no trailer thing?
Yeah.
I just curious, yeah.
What I, what I do though is this, if anybody from the town in Arjua calls Town Manager, a select person, or me directly, or my people from this community and needs help, they won't go without, I don't care what day it is, we'll pull up, we always have, always will, as long as I'm around. Yeah, residents, residents in Arjua, it's like, it's like, it's crazy. You have no idea how many people would love to be from Arjua when it comes to getting rid of that trash.
You see, you will pay a bag or this. Come on in, yell, you're ready to.
Oh yeah, if, if anybody wants to, that's a big company thing, they wanted us to charge people to use the scale, it's, it's a horror show. We don't, we don't collect cash, which is a good thing, and if someone wants to throw away something, we just create a manual ticket, let them go, it's free, it's easier.
I've got questions.
Shoot away.
A timeline.
Estimated timeline, well, the DEP is holding a public meeting October 4th. They wanted to do it this week, but the consultant had the dates backwards on, on notification to a butter, so it got pushed out to the 4th. We hope to approach the planning board late this fall. Hope, without too much trouble, we'll get an approval, and we hope to have Sherwood will have bids ready for contractors this winter so that we can break ground first thing in the spring. First thing that'll need to be done is go in with a, with a forester and clear it, grab it, and then we hope that in, by this time next year, right around the time we're opening Phase 14, that this facility is open as well. September, October.
Where it's running through the, the existing one, how's that?
We'll have it all ready, and then we're gonna have to figure it out. We're gonna have to have a bypass lane, well, one thing that's gonna come, well, we have an existing septic system in building to the airport side that has been talk of maybe eliminating some stuff that way so that we can make a, it'll be a, it'll be work in progress when that comes, but we'll figure it out.
That's my other question, I've got a third. We talked about the value of being from Norad Rock and the Norad Rock Dumb Sticker, and we see it more than anybody here in front of us. Is there gonna be a part of this development that will ensure that the number of vehicles coming to that back gate is gonna be proportionate to what we're seeing?
How would you propose that differently?
With the golden dollars, where they're actually tied to like a barcode.
We've talked about, there's been talk about a scanning system.
Because I mean, it's, it could be dollars on the table for us, it could be dollars out of our pocket for us. If it's dollars out of Norad Rock's pocket, it's our neighbor communities.
More dollars out of mine than yours, but anyway.
Exactly, right, but so I think, and we all know that it's not accurate. I mean, the employees are trying to do the best thing for people that are getting through there to keep it moving, and so it's not an accurate account, at the very least, and it's not, because we don't do tonnage, it's just complicated, but no, that's something that we always get, and also it would, it would tie to your motor vehicle registration, which is how we drive.
Does everybody here know how the back gate works from a financial standpoint?
Do you have a second?
Oh yeah, it's horrible, it's horrible.
That's fine.
But it's been this way since.
Three years.
Plus.
Okay.
Given that there's no scale out there, a visit is a visit, so what you bring in weighs the same as what you bring in, which weighs the same as what he brings in, regardless of what town you're from, so we divide up the visits and the tons and back our way into it that way. It's inaccurate, we, it's accurate tonnage, but the problem is you could bring in light trash, you could bring heavy trash, you could bring, you could bring in three of your neighbors and you could bring in five, and you might bring in some from Belgrade, so that's a challenge. It's, the, the person working out there can't be a full-time trash police. But if we do a better job ensuring that people have accurate stickers and not stickers that they put on with tape and pass to their friend, or we have to be a little more diligent about enforcing the rule, it's, but it's tough, you, you just.
So I don't know what it would cost theoretically, but you know, I have my car wash sticker, and if you try to peel it off a trash.
Yeah.
And it's fixed to that car, so see, I don't know what the technology would cost.
Oh, we, we talked about it.
We had it and it was tied to your motor vehicle registration, because we expire them with the motor vehicle registration. We won't give them all, if your motor vehicle registration expires, we're not giving you a dumb sticker. It might be narrowed to that.
I won't dispute that for one second.
And that if your motor vehicle expires, so is your access to the waste.
You'd be surprised how many people say, well, I own 20 acres, why can't I bring my, dum, 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 dum. And then the one that says, well, I don't have a truck and my cousin from east wherever has a truck and they're helping me do the cleanup, and it's like, yeah, okay. I've heard them all. And Richard and Sharon have heard as many as me, I think.
I've never been to go.
Easy, that's a bad, that's a bad. We don't use the D word.
Anyway, I think from a, from a, it's across the board perspective, I think it would be nice to have.
Okay.
For you, for us.
No, for the, I mean. Yeah.
I see what wrong pays for the back end, I see what's in the field pays, and I just can't believe that it's that way.
It goes well beyond that, you know, if, you, you just can't imagine haulers, there's, you know, there are, there are containers in towns that have no solid waste budget or anything, and you just, all you do is, and most people drive by and don't think, hey, there's a can in Cornville. It doesn't have.
Right.
Or second, we, you know, Cornville doesn't have a count over here on the commercial side, they have a transfer station. Commercial trucks don't dump at the Cornville's transfer station, so what happens with the Cornville trash when it gets picked up in a can? Gets, somebody comes in and says, and it goes onto that town till somebody gets caught. And I played trash cop, and I've made phone calls to town managers and boards, and I've been shooed away, and I've said, okay, I'm done playing trash cop for the town. I just keep an eye on Norad right now, but I don't keep an eye on the others. Not, they can, they have code enforcement people, and when I have a valid violator that they want to do nothing with, so yeah, it's their money.
Right.
You just measure what.
Oh, it's big business, I miss a lot of money, it's not less, it's far.
You know, for $3.50 to you is $80 to me, so. Any comments? It, it'll be, it'll be a good product, it really will be, and if you have any, that's a good one, any others, shoot them my way.
I can do a fly over Adams to Woodings, and it's been a while since I've been up, I actually heard everyone, I think the town should pay for it. But no, it is a, you mean, I haven't seen the transfer station or any of that from the air, off the grounds, I mean, it's impressive how clean the operation is.
It's important.
I was just impressed, it's been years.
Important for me to keep it nice.
Yeah, good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody else?
Thanks.
Do you want? Did I write on the top one? There you go. Give me more screen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, here. General Assistance Boardman Stan. Yeah. Have a pleasure. Well, this is a every year thing, the state issues us the guidelines, the maximums that are allowed, it deals with income, and based upon that sort of income, then you may or may not be entitled to areas of benefit under these all these others. Customarily, they reimburse 70%, with COVID, they reimburse at a higher rate, but this is a formality largely, the number is set by the state, so. You can increase these maximums if that's your pleasure, but the town draws that increase.
you can increase these maximums if that's your pleasure, but the town knows that increase. Here, for instance, unless you had extenuating emergency circumstances, in your household of two, under appendix A, if you make more than seven hundred and ninety dollars a month, that's a household of two, you're not eligible for assistance.
Vehicle. That's great. I will take a motion on the.
No, this is a public hearing, so we're giving you the questions.
No, but, anybody? I don't wanna angry so myself.
Right, I'm here, you're writing it. Put that with food, guys.
Uh, rest of the weekend, just close, so, I'll close the public hearing. Discussion action on general assistance ordinance and appendices. Day motion, in motion, saying, made for discussion, see none, all those favor, to everybody? Don't know. Other business? We do have a bunch of stuff, we just have a lot of stuff, we talked about getting back to little things. What all fire hydrants supposed to be paid? It was so long ago, I think I've forgotten, but wasn't that thing, what the fire hydrant's supposed to be paid?
Well, we don't know those, don't we, like, rent them, shouldn't, like, the people who rent them from the payments?
Supposed to happen. I just, there's so many little things that are falling through the cracks, and I think, uh, maybe we all have a lot of stuff to get to, but I think we need to get, uh, some old stuff back on our agenda so that they don't just fall through the cracks, and ninety thousand dollars a year, we pay for those fire hydrants. Oh, right, it came from, so it's, it's stuff like that that's just falling through. Ninety thousand dollars a year. Yes, right.
It's up there.
Yeah, seventy-five, seventy.
I thought for some reason, like, eighty was in my head, yeah.
I can't remember how it would be, but it was supposed to be, and it's just, again, what was.
Yeah, we're gonna use the full-time five, if I have this courtesy to the water district to check the pain, and then the water district's gonna be responsible for paying.
You pay ninety, and you have to be paid?
Well, this is a courtesy so that we could get the hydrant paid, yes, yes, we let that work out. When maybe that be the case, or we'll get some stuff, I mean, if that's your pleasure.
Ah.
Can we pick the color or make it red? Or is it?
I think, I think.
I don't know.
Why was it?
Everything's about a letter, dude, everything.
I know, I've seen a few that orange, I don't, yeah, I would be so full of this, I would like, whether we have to buy the golden rule or date, for the ninety thousand, and they may be paying up.
Is that, because that's the warrants of it, like, to send the water district trustee, request them to be responsible.
Yeah, definitely, I mean. They like to be red at least, and if it's a big diesel line service, so we don't have to. Yeah.
It's been a lot of that effect, and that takes off my.
I want a motion to add the cemetery.
Other business?
If you don't have any other, what does that have to do with this?
Make a motion, we add discussion on a quick claim, D, agenda, cemetery, quick claim, D, agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, made for discussion, all those favor, to everybody?
Motion to sign the claim D for cemetery lot number two forty-nine, one half of that.
I'll second.
Motion second, made for discussion, see none, all those favor, to everybody? Anything else on other business? Okay, uh, association on, uh, foratorium, between the town of Norad Rock and Red House, that you.
This is left over from the meeting, where we had executive session, in the course of that executive session, there were negotiations, an offer was made, to increase the rate for public works employees to two dollars an hour. If those affected forfeited the sixty cent raise that would take effect January first, twenty twenty-three, and effective two dollar upfront, and that's up to a dollar forty outside of the contract. Uh, they need to take that back to their membership for vote, membership has voted, the membership has accepted uh, the arrangement of a two dollar an hour increase effective September nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and forfeiting all, all public works employees covered under the contract shall forfeit the sixty cent per hour increase scheduled to take effect January first, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and it is just the public works, okay.
Only the works, yeah.
So do we need, like, a motion on this or something, like, to just?
The motion will be to approve and sign the sidebar in between the town of Norad Rock and municipal employees, and I'll say, I don't ask the council, ninety-three, that's written.
So moved, next.
Motion second, uh, any further discussions, see none, all those in favor?
All right, executive session, uh, first two hundred and one, M R S A, four, five, six, eight, just, that's five, chief, great process.
And will we go into executive session?
Motion second, any further discussion, see none, all those favor?
... Vayner, is everybody? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, we have motion to adjourn. motion second as for the expression, say none of those, Vayner. That's it, nice.